Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Lebanon Town Council for the month of May. A lot of business to be conducted tonight. We'll have a joint public hearing with our planning commission. We've got some business to take care of before the end of minutes, agenda, and pay the bills. Then we're going to recognize some young men and women. Okay? All right. So with that, if we could all rise, at least to make the ground, we'll have our invocation. Following his invocation, we will hand a place of allegiance. Thank you, sir.
Father, we love you today. Thank you for a beautiful day, Lord. Thank you for the rain and how faithful you are to us, Lord. We're glad that your mercies are new every morning and your compassions fail not. Your faithfulness is great. We thank you most of all for Jesus Christ making the ultimate sacrifice on the cross for the sins of the whole world and salvation that's full and free through him. Thank you for this town, Lord. Thank you for this area that we live in, for this council, the mayor, the leadership of this town. While we are mindful, the Cackley family tonight asks that you please comfort them, Lord, and help them through, out of time of laws, of hassle, for he was such a cog in the wheel in this community, Lord. He'll be heest. But I pray that you will help the family and comfort them. And, Lord, you'll give wisdom tonight to the decisions that are made, for everything that's done will bring you honoring glory. You'll give those that are here safety as they travel home. In Jesus' name, good-bye.
Applause.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the peaceful and liberty and justice for all.
Any council member have anything to add or discuss? Mr. Gilroy, did you need to add something?
I do not, Mayor. We do need to discuss a date for the finance and budget meeting before we dismiss tonight.
Hey, look, tax rate, we won't discuss it tonight.
I can get a nut date on that over there.
Thank you. Anything else? Have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. And we'll have a chance to read the April fourteenth minutes from our council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April fourteenth meeting of our regular council meeting.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes is your second.
I'll second.
Right, thank you, sir. All those in favor with the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay, we're now down to approval of April accounts payable on asset purchases. Mr. Short, is this anything else other than what you've laid out there?
Just extra stations, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the April accounts payable as presented along with the AP plenary report B.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to pay the bills? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Okay. As I mentioned earlier, we have some young men and women we'd like to recognize tonight for their achievements. So we'll get started here. Uh, Mr. Rastign, can you come up front, please? Any of those of you in the students' room here? Mr. Steffey. Hello, I don't know what you're doing there. What about you? Uh, you know what you just did, though, don't you? Put the heat on your national standard. Yeah, you did. Okay. Yes. Okay. We have several young men and women who participated in two thousand twenty-five State Skills USA Masonry Division and other competitions. So what I'm going to do is present to you, whereas Booker Steffey was successful in becoming the two thousand twenty-five State Skills USA Masonry Division winner, therefore be resolved by the mayor and town council that Booker be hereby commended in becoming a state winner. Further resolved, he be commended for his commitment, dedication, and success on this twelfth day in May, two thousand twenty-five. Congratulations. I was starting out. Is it Hunter Cox? Come forward, there. Oh, young man. So you're a big old boy? Uh, I see, can you go by Hunter?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas Hunter Cox was successful in becoming the two thousand twenty-five State Skill USA Brick Layer Division winner, be resolved by the mayor, the town council, and Hunter be hereby commended in becoming the state winner. And be further resolved, Hunter be hereby commended for his commitment, dedication, and success on this twelfth day of May, two thousand twenty-five. Congratulations. Calm down, as I say, Levi. There are you. Levi, we want to recognize you for your success as being the second-place finisher in the US Skills USA Masonry Division. We be resolved that the mayor and the town council hereby recognize you for becoming second-place finisher, and we commend you for your commitment, dedication, and success on this twelfth day in May. Thank you, Scotty. Congratulations. We want to congratulate and recognize you for your third-place finish at the State Skills USA Brick Layer Division, and we want to hereby commend you in becoming the third-place finisher, and more importantly, your commitment, dedication, and success in this competition. Congratulations. Shannon, come on up. There's the man leaving. How you doing?
I'm good.
Good to see you, Shannon. You've been very successful in educating these young men and women over the years, and I know you're proud of them, as we are, and we can wish you continued success in your program and in the competition with these young men and women as they improve. So, we'd like to take this opportunity, whereas Shannon Brooks, a masonry instructor for the Russell County Career and Technical Center, now be resolved by the mayor and the town council as Shannon Brooks, be hereby commended in being an instructor, and be hereby commended for your commitment, dedication, and success on this twelfth day in May. All right, now we're moving to categories. All right.
Samantha Ray.
Samantha. Samantha, we're here to recognize and congratulate you for being or becoming successful as the Criminal or Skills USA Criminal Justice Division Job Demonstration A Model winner. Further, let it be resolved that the mayor and town council that we recognize you and commend you for becoming the winner at the state level, and that we commend you for your commitment and dedication and success this twelfth day in May. Congratulations. How are you? Still fast? Okay. We're making our best, man. Shay, you also complete in the Criminal Justice Division Job Demonstration A Model, and you are a winner at the state level. We want to, this time, let it be resolved by the mayor and town council that Shay Johnson be hereby commended in becoming the winner of the Justice Division Job Demonstration A Model winner, and you're commended for your commitment, your dedication, and success on this twelfth day in May. The mayor about to run out of room.
Maddy Bailey.
Hi, Maddy. How are you? Good. It's like you were involved also in the Criminal Justice Division Job Demonstration Open Model. We want to recognize you, Maddy Bailey, for being successful as a second-place finisher in your category. Be further resolved that the mayor and the town council would commend you for becoming a second-place finisher in this program, and in further resolve, we want particularly commend you for your commitment and dedication and success on this twelfth day in May. Congratulations. It's Haley. Where are you, Haley? Good to see you. Haley was also involved in the Criminal Justice Division Job Demonstration Open Model, whereas Haley was successful in becoming two thousand twenty-five State Skills USA Criminal Justice Division Job Demonstration Model second place. You are commended for becoming a second-place finisher at the state competition, as well as being commended for your commitment, dedication, and success on this twelfth day in May. Mayor, you better go that way.
Connie Stinson.
Out on the hill?
That's a song, yeah.
Yeah. I've known you for a long time, and I know you're very proud of these young folks and their, particularly their success at the state level. Whereas Connie Stinson, the Criminal Justice Instructor for the Russell County Career and Technical Center, therefore be resolved by the mayor and the town council, that Connie Stinson be hereby commended in being the instructor, and further commended for her commitment and dedication and success on this twelfth day in May. Let me see. Right on the front row. Deanna participated in the State Skills USA Cosmetology Division Job Interview, and we wish to congratulate you for finishing third. Also, we want to recognize and commend you for your commitment, dedication, and success on this twelfth day in May.
Vanessa's not here, I don't believe. It's true.
We also have a president of the Career and Technology Center with us tonight, so Mr. Rastign, I'll turn it over to you for comments regarding these young men and women.
Mr. Doughty, members of the council, it sure is an honor and privilege to be here tonight, and we want to truly thank you for recognizing our students. These students put in a lot of extra work to be able to compete at the state level. They put in a lot of time and energy, and it's, you know, just amazing the things that they are able to do. And so I'm very proud of them. I know our instructors is. I want to thank these students and our instructors for the great job that they do at our school. And, you know, as I look around and see some of these former students serving our community, it's just so rewarding to know that we have people in our community that, you know, really and truly recognize our kids and put forth their energy to, you know, make our community what it is today. Thank you, Mr. Doughty.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Andrew will do this, man.
Very careful.
Let's put the ladies here on the front. Put the ladies on the front. Come on down, Ben. See, Larry, I'll let you get to the end. How we doing now, Sean?
I can get everybody.
Any other grandparents, parents need to take time for pictures? Let's give these young men and women a round of... Did you didn't get a picture?
I got one.
You got, y'all turn around and check in with the town council.
Congratulations, man. Congratulations.
Hello.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job.
How are you? Don't worry about it.
I just said I wouldn't believe you.
Say, matter? Let's get over there. Give us camera. Say, yes, say it. Yeah. All right. Take a couple of hours. Thank you.
Hey, Greg. Need a little air. I think cooler.
I get it. We're getting our switch spots here this late.
Oh, you're doing it, that's right. This time, I call a joint meeting of the Lebanon Town Council and our Lebanon Planning Commission to order. Do we have a form of understanding?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This time, we'll turn our consents over to you, Braden Stil.
I'm late. I'm always late.
Kick him off.
I'm, oh, just always late. She's the only way I hurt her.
Behave yourself, you're behind me. You've got rich, you've got richness to behave. Thank you, Mayor and council, for having us tonight. We're here to listen to your requests for rezoning or conditional use permits, and listen to pros and cons, for and against. When we take a vote on it, any comments, we'll listen to comments as you ready, then we'll have a vote. This time, would you read the petition, please?
Yes, sir. An application submitted by Hannah Hughes and Shane Lee's for condition use for residential views in a C-1 commercial district of property located to a right of James Drive, adjacent property and is not being notified, and this was tabled at the last meeting. Correction?
Ms. Hughes?
Yes. And there was a comment that we may bring in, and we have this, and we show people what module we want, and where it would be located, and how we would get to it as far as right-of-way. And we can have right-of-way to the road somewhere next to James Drive.
That's something I was asking about last week.
Yes, yes.
Do you have any questions about it?
I don't have any questions myself, but I did want to pass along. Cindy Martin was unable to make the meeting today. She had a family emergency that she had to go to. But she stated she'd been into the meeting last week. She said she was fine with everything. Obviously, they discussed double Ys, weren't allowed by D, anyway. She was okay with everything. She did want me to pass along, if at all possible, she'd like it to be price-stick, to be used as an entrance. Like I said, that's just her opinion, what she wanted me to pass along, so I'm going to pass that upon her.
All right. Does anybody else have a question? I think you've satisfied everything they asked for. Thank you for that. Does there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter?
I would just like to get a copy of the flat first, act five, if we could. If I'm wondering, I'll get extras.
Yes, sir. Okay, do you have any motions on this matter?
I'll make that motion that we accept this condition use permit for use in a A and C commercial district.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. This time.
An application submitted by Chad and Mary for rezoning of the property on how-on drive from a C-1 commercial district to a R-1 single residential district, adjacent property and is not being notified.
Here.
I've had the piece of property regone from a C-1 to a R-1.
And this is behind the...
On the hind drive, behind the soccer field.
Drive.
Jackson Drive.
Okay. Anybody who has switched these glasses? You weren't playing on building.
Six home.
Six home. Questions? Sounds great, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this? All right, do we have any motions for or against this?
I'll make a motion to rezone from commercial to R-1 residential district.
All opposed? Is that me?
Okay. An application submitted by Michelle and Matthew Reed for condition use permit to place a double Y mobile home of the property located at four oh five Fields Avenue in a R-2 Jimon Wells District, adjacent property and is not being notified.
Great.
I've had the piece of property regone from a C-1 to a R-1.
And this is behind the...
On the hind drive, behind the soccer field.
Drive.
Jackson Drive.
Okay. Anybody who has switched these glasses? You weren't playing on building.
Six home.
Six home. Questions? Sounds great, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this? All right, do we have any motions for or against this?
I'll make a motion to rezone from commercial to R-1 residential district.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Is that me?
Okay. An application submitted by Michelle and Matthew Reed for condition use permit to place a double Y mobile home of the property located at four oh five Fields Avenue in a R-2 Jimon Wells District, adjacent property and is not being notified.
Feeling good now? I'm just coming back to just get a permit for one double Y for me and my little girl. I saw from Miss Jackson earlier, I've been here my whole life. I grew up, I was growing her mom as a kid, you know, you watch her play ball, grew up, grew, you know. I wanted to land when I first saw her property, and we get one pitch, and it's beautiful, serene, quiet. I guess this little bag won't rock. So, we label acquired this beautiful pitch property, my little girl, and we just kind of put the double Y on it, finish up on her days, and give it down to our little girl soon. But if it's so hard for us now, how's it going to be for them when it's their turn? It's going to look just like that mom, because like I said, they make double Ys just like the mom now. To do that, you're two-foot in pitch, seventeen thousand dollars. So that's all I'm trying to do, is just get some home up there. If I can't, I'll be honest, I'll probably have to look elsewhere and take my family. I don't want to do that. We want to stay right here. So that's fine.
Thank you, sir. All right, do we have anyone else who would like to speak for or against this?
I'm Bobby Campbell. I bought the tree fields out right in front of this property he's talking about, and I don't have no problem with being or anything like that, but I'm against it. We've already got one double Y behind us, behind us, going across the backyard, and it's already been crossed with upper part. Hey, say, I'm a little native, I'm a little nice. I just don't have, when I left here, I'm proud.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Anyone who wants to speak about this?
Yes, sir.
Yes, please.
We're about to say that most of the adjacent properties will not even see our home from where it's going to be located. You can see it from the foreline, sure, but most of the adjacent properties will not even be able to see our home. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Anyone who wants to speak about this?
Yes, sir.
Yes, please.
We're about to say that most of the adjacent properties will not even see our home from where it's going to be located. You can see it from the foreline, sure, but most of the adjacent properties will not even be able to see our home. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion on this matter?
I'll make that motion that if they approve the condition use permit, place a double Y on this from that hand, and it's done, or to a R-2 Jimon Wells District.
I'll second that. All right. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'll make that motion that if the appropriate for the conditional use permit place a double Y on this from that end, tangent down from, oh, to a R2 Jimon Board District.
I'll second that. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, first of all, we want to thank our planning commission for their service to the town and to the community. We thank you very much for your taking time and looking at property and reviewing everything and zoning. So at this time, I think what we'll do is do this one at a time. We'll let you just present your all's recommendation one at a time.
First one was an application from Pam and Chan Hughes for permit for residential use in a C1 district to have this approved. We recommend our recommendation to the board is to be approved.
Council's heard our planning commission's recommendation. Any questions at this time? We have a motion regarding for approval of this application.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Sir, second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same side.
Okay, our second one is an application submitted by Chan Lee Bird for rezoning Highland Drive, property on Highland Drive from a C1 to an R1. And the committee recommends to approve that.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same side.
Okay, our third one was an application for an additional use permit by Matthew and Michelle Reed to place a double Y home on their property in a R2 district. And the commission recommends to the board that that is approved as well.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve that application, as you said, second, but read. Any further discussion with the council? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same side. You know, thank you all very much, appreciate your interest. Thank you. Okay. That concludes, I guess that we're closing. Thank you all. See you, bud. You're welcome. All right, we're now done with the questions, Chad. You can come over here.
We've got one more public hearing. But it's just for the council, not the planning commission.
Is that the Quillen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is a public hearing for Quillen Mays' property. Put that near a gin pack or an information packet. You look at those maps there, it's flat from nineteen fifties. That area was originally developed with streets, right of way streets in there, planning to make a neighborhood at one time. Now that property is, the property owner's, Ms. Mays and Ms. Quillen, inherit that property. They're interested to consolidate the entire. Right now, they're in individual lots. They want to consolidate that entire thing. The only thing about it is, we have public right of ways that made for street that runs through there right now. So they're asking for rest of the public right of ways, like consolidate that property.
They want us to abandon them?
Oh, it's, she's, uh, this, okay. It's in public hearing, back here, public hearing. So you see...
Right here, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I've got it. The highlights of the section are broken individual lots. The section in between those are public right of ways made for streets that they're developing subdivision that the town did, except that back in nineteen fifty. So now we're going to consolidate all those lots into one large piece of property. And I'm asking for the right of way to be abandoned or removed, so they can connect those pieces of property. The only one that we would want to keep is the second one down, it's named Pine Street. We would need to leave that one replaced because it's our right of way to the pump station. Oak Street.
What you call it, Pine Street?
Let's see. Correct, Oak Street. Yeah, Oak Street.
So we don't utilize Quillen, it's just this Oak Street to serve us and maintain the water.
Yeah, correct. So we would be...
Crosswalks, yeah.
Correct, that's one of the streets. Yeah, we would be abandoning Pine Street, Hill Avenue, and Quillen Street from North Angle West because the blockers has used that Quillen Street right of way right now as their right of way.
How that main, so their goal is to make all that one property?
Correct.
And keeping the Oak right of way, does that affect that property? Would it affect it on sale?
I'm not sure, but we have no choice outside of right of way to our property.
You're talking about with...
Town, the pump station, the water, yeah.
You said Quillen Street's one that blockers has used for right of way to their house?
From the left of North Angle, which we're only asking for North Angle to the right.
Oh, to the right.
Yes, got you.
Mr. Taylor, any advice on this?
I mean, it's, they're, it's undeveloped streets. Yeah, they're not developed streets, it's, it's up to you all. I mean, it's not something that anybody's using other than Quillens. Except for that Oak Street, which the town uses.
It's like some of the other right of ways from tip with the town.
Yeah.
Same as.
It's not just undeveloped street.
Okay, most council's pleasure regarding this request. Let me clear my ass again. Do you all wish to address this tonight, or you want to think about it, table it? What's your desire? More time? Yes? More time, you want us to do?
Me too, I want to go look in.
Go look in. Okay, we'll give the motion to table for further discussion. Sir, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same side. Anything else, Mr. Short or Dan?
Yes, sir.
I see we got one that it'll come later, I guess, that we didn't deal with. This, this property. Okay, it's tabled. Okay, anything else, both under the hearings, good?
Yes, sir.
Now, sir, regarding the subdivision approval?
Yep.
Should I get my coffee?
You can share that with the inner group.
I like the seven to nine now, put in state specs. Now, more of Zul, should I take it back a little bit? And then build six, kind of, also more around fifteen hundred seventy nine square.
It's a nice piece of property, that's a nice development. So, second, I see. So this would be put in under state specs, the outroad, et cetera?
Yep.
Bobby Zul?
All underground utilities, yep.
All underground, okay. And since this one's same thing?
Yep.
Any further questions for Mr. Lee Berry regarding the subdivision approval?
Well, God, when'd you get started? Mr. Lee Berry, and then would you have the...
I'll start off. And we'll just do one at a time if we solve them, most likely.
Say you're gonna be, you probably get some costs to go ahead and, but imagine where that is located, what your plans are?
We're gonna have a lot of costs.
We'll say you probably have some costs, okay.
Housing stepped up when needed, so.
Yeah, so I want to sort of say, you know, hiring houses, they don't be a house that I'm liking.
I understand. Have a motion regarding the subdivision approval?
And that, I beg Mr. Mayor to approve that as preliminary fact contention on the approval from the relevant authorities.
Correct.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same side.
Thank you.
Mr. Nathan Brainor. Nathan, if you don't care, I will skip round, I'll hang on one second. Just hang out. Is Ms. Gina Kraus here?
Yes, this one's over. Gina in, I'm going to watch.
Is he, Gina?
I am the D, shall I come before you?
You staying out right there? Or you can do the voting, whatever you want to do.
Okay, everybody. So we've got some neighbors here, Angela and... Front and center.
Yeah. Which one of you?
So I live in Lebanon Manor, Astor's Brad. And my neighbors are here. So as you see, we are here because we like speed limit signs. I did have a chat, I'm sure this is okay, Brad, I was walking my dogs this afternoon and Brad said, you know, you are not the first ones to ask for speed limit signs in the Manor. So, so I am just hoping maybe there's some change in the wind that we... Had a lot of children in the Manor now. And I live on Ridge Road, as does my neighbor Judy, Linda, and Angela. And we have some significant speeders. They are jamming up Manor Drive, they're jamming up Ridge Road to the cross at Grumley. And then on the reverse, straight jamming down, Ridge jamming down, Manor Drive to Main. We have been very creative in making our own signs, and some people are actually, I think, I think we've made a teeny change.
We've made a small change.
I think. But when you make a suggestion like this, some people think it's optional. So the reason why we were asking, or we are asking for speed limit signs, is because it's official, and perhaps it can be enforced. Because our situation up there, as you probably all know, if you haven't visited Lebanon Manor, please visit just lovely. Our streets are thin. We have no bike lanes or anything that would give us extra space. In fact, on one side of each street, for the most part, there is a slowdown to a culvert. So, and we have no sidewalks, which is, hi baby, do you have a sidewalk? I don't have a sidewalk. So we're in a predicament whereby not only are the children playing, and they're trying to stay in the yard, but who knows when they all will go out. We've got children waiting for school buses. We've got people walking, dogs. We've got morning walkers. We've got evening family walkings in a stroller, and stroller. We've got kids with a parent on bikes. God forbid UPS truck should come.
That's horrible. Which is a very speedy auto.
And they can be speedy too. They can't, there's no way to get off the road, so these UPS trucks, or would you, Amazon, anything. So our deal is, most people think roads were created for cars, and that is true. But in our circumstance, we just need to say, we need it too. We don't have options. We don't have sidewalks, we have lots of children, we don't have options. Stephanie, did I tell you something that I heard today? So, what I heard, what I learned, and I hope this is correct, is that we are reverse snow plowing by the state, and part of that arrangement is we can't put up speed limit signs. Is that just in Lebanon Manor, or is that in other neighborhoods, or?
Sure. It would just be, it's not that you can't put them up, you just have to ask UPS. Something that's not allowed, you just have to, we have to have UPS permission to put them up, yeah.
Okay, good, good, good. So it's promised.
I think previously we were not given permission.
You were denied?
Yeah, we're, we're going to ask again, but...
Could we? Maybe there's been some change of heart on their part. And you have to wonder, why not? And what is it, a maintenance issue? Why, why would they deny having a...
I've not been, I've not contacted the bathroom, so I can talk to them. Jack and Chad, it might have been prior, town man, if I find out, of course. If they all get it, then we can find out.
Well, we would just like to have fifteen mile per hour speed limit signs to make us feel safe there, yeah.
What was that figure you used just then?
Fifteen. Isn't that a neighborhood, isn't that neighborhood?
Well, it allows that speed limit.
Probably with twenty-five.
I think it's, I believe, UPS won't give us twenty-five, I think.
That's the lowest they'll give us, is that what you're saying?
I say I believe.
Okay.
We have to check in all these and find, we need another locations again, too.
Okay.
I think that this year before, the people that were requesting were wanting to get five mile per hour.
Oh, okay, okay, we don't need that.
Yeah.
People would be really great for life.
They requested, it was at the daycare center, or the daycare woman. Yeah, they wanted children playing or children playing or...
And that's also a thing, the cars coming over, cars coming over, dropping, picking up. And that's a thing, because they come down to Ridge Road, and there's a parent driving a car after a drop off on their phone, and, 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 you know, yes! She's, she's already at work, right? I'm thinking, if you, if there was something in the road, would you even see it?
Well, is there any chance also to do something about the intersection where they see the words where it crosses to go down, I don't know what your road is called.
Red and D.
Yeah, right there, they cross and...
The red, they cross.
The hill, you can't see them.
Can't see them all.
If you put one way, stop sign instead of two, because one is just straight, that's the way to go, you know?
So, because...
You request the four ways.
At least the four ways, if you can't get the order.
Request that too, if you would, Mr. Short.
Whatever you get.
And some of these people are new to the neighborhood, so...
Can you give him the exact, the locations of the street? Do you have a location in any group?
Yeah, there's, actually, just exactly where Judy lives is exactly the same, uh, speed, uh, speed space. What is your number, one forty-three? Yeah, that's about the middle of where the speeding happens.
Very good, well, we thank you for the kind...
Yeah.
...your concerns and requests, good.
The other thing I wanted to ask is what are the parameters around farm use licenses? Because I see a lot around, I'm scratching my head about.
See them, gentlemen, they in general?
Hello, Richard, Eric, Vescan.
What exactly do you like, nobody?
How does one get that? What are their parameters? I'm sorry, I was mosquito and I got it.
The farm use tags changed just here recently. So as a matter, you have to have a vehicle that's over ten thousand pounds... So, as a matter, you have to have a vehicle that's over ten thousand pounds gross vehicle weight to have the paper farm use tag. If it's under ten thousand pounds gross vehicle weight, then they have to have a hard plate from the DMV that has the F on the front. And with that, they have to provide the DMV with certain, you know, a certain proof of a certain amount of land. And then there's restrictions on how far they can drive up, what the purpose are they driving up for. They can drive to and from, you know, to and from stores, you know, there's a seventy-five mile a day, a hundred mile a day, things like that. That's all the ones from the DMV. Now, the paper farm use tags, that's just the old school white farm use tags. Vehicle over ten thousand pounds gross vehicle weight, not curb vehicle, gross vehicle weight. And it's restricted to strictly farm use purchases.
Okay.
Which is to and from, the stores and things.
Okay, so if one has a question about one, a truck that's got a farm use and doesn't seem appropriate, what does one do?
You can come talk, let us know, I'd be happy to take it here for you, we'd gladly check it out.
Excellent. Okay, okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Judy, Linda, Angela, Gabe, and Stephanie. Thank you all.
All right, you ready? Are you ready to come in?
I'm ready.
I was, I was waiting for you, I was just sorry, so I sent you this one here also.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, take care.
Yeah, you're welcome. See you. See you.
All right, I want to get up. This is one, too. Yes, it will be. Don't they turn a lot or too long?
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Down, bouncing? It's nice to be back with you all again. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about some beautification opportunities in town. And I want to go ahead and commend the town, not because I've been involved in the work, but the way that the town looks and the aesthetics is wonderful. You get a lot of compliments on it from other towns that I also work with. And you've become a little bit of the value of their existence trying to keep up with me, so I think that's a really good thing. We obviously love this town and want to make it as nice as we can. So I'm going to talk to you about two projects tonight. The first that you have in your hand is called the West Main Streetscape Expansion. And I understand that you all have plans to expand, extend the decorative lighting that you've got in the historic district from Cleveland Road intersection right here out to the DMV intersection with Clinch Mountain Road. And I think that's going to be a very nice addition to the town and be a nice gateway into downtown Lebanon. What comes along with that is some opportunities, and I want to talk to you about that here tonight. So on the first page here, you can see the plan. And I believe currently that AEP has the lights all along what I'll call the south side of Main Street. So it would be the bottom right-hand side of Main Street there by the DMV Castle Building, Presbyterian Church. And that's where they currently have the lighting proposed. But that's perfectly fine. I would like you to consider adding lighting on the left-hand side of the road down through there. And that would mean lighting there at Keglin Service Center, at Clark Print Shop and the new businesses there and the old WLRB building. And then out at the Clinch Mountain Avenue intersection across the road. I think it would be important to light that intersection.
Did AEP include the two on Cleveland Road, or was that your proposal?
That is where their marks are right now, and so I think that's needed.
So that's four additional that you're recommending?
That would be four additional if the Cleveland Road ones are included in AEP's current proposal. Yes, sir. And I stopped by and talked to Mr. Keglin there one day just to get his thoughts about it. And I think Leonard had a really good point about one of the locations is going to be sort of in a sightline triangle that's marked here currently. And so we've slid that down to be more beside their building and sort of slid the other ones down as well. And hopefully give it an even lighting distribution down through there. But I do think that left side would be nice to include. You certainly don't want those businesses to feel left out in terms of beautifying in front of their businesses and properties down through there. And so that's the lighting. You can see there at the Cleveland Road intersection, there is a existing concrete wall that's there to protect from trucks and trailers getting over on Mr. Keglin. And so we'll talk about that here in just a moment, about updating that wall, make it look a little nicer, maybe put some plantings behind it. And then there between Trinity Bell and the Presbyterian Church, you'll see some recommendations there just for cleaning up existing vegetation. Perhaps painting that guardrail black and adding a new directional sign with plantings, and we'll see that as we walk through the package here. But the big piece, I guess, on this in addition to the lighting would be, you'll see that proposed retaining wall that runs from Clark Print Shop down to the intersection of Clinch Mountain Avenue. And currently, that right now is just a rock bank. You know, it was just cut in when Main Street was widened there, I'm sure. There's some big trees that are on top of that that probably are getting close to the end of their life cycle, whether or not. The next hurricane is going to probably bring some of it down, because they're just hanging on to the roots, they're hanging on to the rocks. And I do believe there's been, Drew, correct me, there's none in here, and these are the chief police.
The rocks.
The rocks fall out, and there's been some police reports on that. And you can see some of those chunks sitting, you know, just tossed back up on the bank, but that's going to continue to happen. And so what this wall would do is, it would be a forty-eight inch tall wall. And it would, there would be some earthwork and rock removal that would be required to lay that slope back on top of that wall, back up to the Bruner property and Clark Print Shop property down through there. But I believe it would really clean up this area of the town and truly make it a gateway entrance into the town, extend it out to the Clinch Mountain DMV. So with that, you can see there on the top right, or top left, excuse me, the type of wall that we're talking about. This would be a stacked-in-place segment retaining wall, most of the lighting was done behind the theater. And the reason for that is, it would be a real job trying to get a concrete footer in down that way with all the rock and the tices of the road. So this type of wall system, this stacked retaining wall system can fit right behind the curb. It can go up four feet high without any engineering reinforcement, and I think it'll look really beautiful. We can put the town railing right behind it, it'll be all along with some of the hawthorns that we've talked about and put in town already down through there. And I think it'd really be a beautiful, a beautiful entry into Lebanon versus one that we don't like to look at. You know, just sort of go on past it till we get to Town Hall. And so I'll walk you through the visuals here. And so this will be coming into town from the west. This is right in front of Lebanon News there, you can see where the wall sits. The new proposed street lighting down through there and the hawthorns over on the side with just the grass slope back at the top there. I believe you can, that would be simple, but very effective and very beautiful. The next image there, the next sheet shows you standing at DMV at that corner and looking across the road, about the height of the wall, the height of the fence. The trees speckled in there. I do believe it would be a vast improvement to the residents that's there, those trees that are there now. The worst enemy for a house is a tree, and it's just going to cause more problems as it goes. This opens it all up and cleans it up, hopefully the landlord would be in support of doing so. The third, the third picture there is from Clark Print Shop looking back west, so the other end looking the other direction. And then again, you can see the proposed lighting and how that wall fits in. There will probably need to be there, you can see on the top of that slope where Mr. Clark's car is parked. We might want to talk about additional guardrail or something there just for safety, that being an actual active parking lot for business. But that, those details can be discussed down the road. The next sheet then is in front of the Presbyterian Church, and this is the end of that guardrail and the directional sign and all the overgrown vegetation you can see with just a little bit of work painting the guardrail black and some plantings and a new directional sign, how nice that could look under the town with those new lights. The last one then is the intersection of Cleveland Road and the concrete wall that I had talked to you about. The proposal would be just to face that wall with the standard stone that we've used, like on the wall of Lebanon Baptist and Pavilion. At the fire hall, the same classic stone that you all have used everywhere in town. And then having those two lights, they're positioned where AEP has them spotted right now. And then there's the aroah hydrant just in there behind it just to give it some softness and some color throughout the season. And so those are the main design points, design opportunities, I guess, that we talked about. Does anybody have any questions about, about any of that?
What's the length of that wall?
So that wall is going to be about four hundred linear feet total. Yes, sir. So you're talking right at sixteen hundred square feet at four foot tall. Yes, sir. Of course, the last page there, everybody wants to know what's the cost. That's a, that's a best guess, as I've said there on the title, it's an opinion of probable cost. Certainly not a bid by any means, but we give you an idea of sort of what all those things outside of the streetlights.
Yes, it's outside of the streetlights.
Yes, sir, this would be in addition to the streetlights. And I do want to make a very quick clarification on this. If you look back at the front page, you can see that wall there, which I think is really a beautiful wall for a segment of block. And it matches pretty similarly the mortar stone that's gone everywhere in town. So that wall block, and Justin Adams is helping with this, trying to get its source. It's going to be a little more expensive if we use that block than what I have in this opinion of probable cost. So instead of fifty-six to seventy-two, you're talking about probably seventy-five to ninety thousand for that particular block.
Well, can we not discuss, make sure that we're staying consistent with the other stone in town?
So to use the mortar stone, like it's Lebanon Baptist and on Pavilion, there has to be a masonry core to that wall. What that means then, Mayor, is we have to have a footer underneath that wall. The footer would probably have to be anywhere between five and eight feet wide. And so you're going to be cutting into Main Street and having to cut back, trying to cut back into that rock to get a wide footer in to get a vertical concrete core that you can put that mortar stone on. This block is, it's dry stacked, and so the stack's right in behind the curb. It's going to go up four courses with a cap block and it's done.
Is it in the system?
It is, yes, sir. But what I was saying is the rock, or the system that I've got proposed right there, we were a little low on the estimate. So if instead of fifty-six to seventy-two, you'd be looking at seventy-five to ninety thousand for that particular block.
Now, if that's an inner wall and backfill, grab it.
It is, grab it, yes, sir. Backfill with fifty-seven stone, you know, foundation drains out, so all the atmospheric pressure gets out of there. Yes, sir. Now, that's not to say that, you know, you couldn't go with another block like we've done at the pickleball courts or out at the theater or something like that. But this, this block we thought was really, really nice and would get us closer to that quarter, so.
A lot of presentation.
A lot less hammering.
Lot less hammering. There will still be a lot of hammering.
And our guys can do it.
That's right.
Yeah, we got a hammer.
We got a hammer.
Yeah.
Leonard, how do you feel about adding, his recommendation about adding the lights?
The ones up there on the corner, I got no problem with. The one I had a problem with is the first turn in where the pole is for the red light. If you come out of the town's right away where y'all put that on, it's going to be, I know it's a pole, that you're going to block cars view. Those cars now can come around the corner from Cleveland Road, they don't slow down. There's no stop sign there. Somebody will pull out the front of one, because it's a little bit of a problem, but not bad for the red light pole standing. But if you had one in there, it would really be a problem, especially for all the people. Going to pull out and come this way is a major fail. But now down there where he's got one proposed where the utility poles at, at the window, that'd be a problem. Because you clearly see the turn right when you come out of Park Mall.
Did you equalize the distance in those?
Yes, sir.
And what's your opinion?
Sure did.
Okay.
But I'd have no problem with that at all.
And we do have an estimate from AEP on the lighting project. I'm assuming it'd be a proportioned increase, Mayor, on if we add four lights.
Turnseth up to GMW.
Yeah. I would, I mean, Drew, do we know with VDOT? Have we heard back about urban maintenance funds for the wall?
Yeah, I actually talked with Nathan before that Jeff got back with.
Yeah, Jeff said he thought maintenance funds could be used for it. And the only comment that they had about this whole West Main Streetscape Expansion was the pedestrian crossing sign that sits right there in front of those rock faces. He was just saying, we want to make sure that's still there. Of course, we'll make concession for that, but otherwise, he said they had no issues with anything shown here.
Well, that's a, I'll tell you, the majority of this to me is a safety issue. We already know that that wall got damaged, well, it's been damaged over time.
Yes, sir.
But Helena really put damage on it. The worst thing you can think about is going up that road, that rock wall, which happened, but it didn't get our way. But I guess it got down the edge of the road. So we don't want it, certainly we don't want it to...
That's right.
Just collapse, because if that, if that bank collapses, it's going to collapse a long way back.
It could. Yeah, and I think the trees that are there, you know, they're volunteer trees. I mean, they've, they've grown in since that was cut. And over time, they're going to, when they're just clinging on to a rock, all of a sudden, the right windstorm is going to take them off that rock.
It's going to take a few limbs, that's a pretty good sign.
But we had one of them come almost to the road, we got, did we get rid of it, Drew? One of them almost come out for Hitler. But anyway, good design, very good.
Thank you.
I like it.
I do, too.
I think Scott also, I'm pretty sure I'd go back and check, I think the proposed AEP was a netted pole, so they could only be three extra.
Mayor, I'd like to incorporate this, the lighting and the landscape improvements into our twenty-five, twenty-six budget if all possible. I think, I think between equipment purchases that we'll have to discuss, projects that we'll have to discuss. You know, I'd like to, I'd like just to try to plan to fit this in next fiscal year if at all possible.
You're, are we going to have a, that may, you're going, if that goes, are we going to incorporate that into our planning budget? Is that what you're thinking?
I'm saying if we can fit it in the budget, I'd like to move forward with the project. I mean, I plan on having a committee meeting over the next two weeks.
Deanna, are you good with that? Lynn?
Yes.
You good? Brett?
Yes, sir.
All right. Very good. Project, this lovely place.
What's that name?
Next one.
Next one. Yeah, you're right.
I got another one, yes, sir. All right.
What do you like about this, not this? You like that, I know what you did.
Who saved money on the carrying?
Well, then it's going to be landscaping the sign, we're not building a building.
Well, that distance will be VDOT. I don't know that. Well, no, it's not even our property.
It's not our property.
Well, this is VDOT.
Okay, this will be the main page.
That ain't fair though, Mayor. That is not fair.
Might want to explain, we not, you know, we had talked earlier.
Yes, sir.
I know some of the folks here tonight and leaving would have been with us on past discussions. And VDOT, at one time, we were told we couldn't do anything out there because of the drainage structure. So you were true, you might want to update why we're at this point, haven't gotten to this point.
All right, so we're going to move now from West Main Street to East Main Street. And the intersection that we're going to be discussing is the intersection that comes off of Four Lane, US Highway 19. Comes into Main Street there, affectionately known as the slurry paper lay down area. But nonetheless, this big, this big open area to the right of, of Main Street as it comes into town there at that main intersection. Years ago, I believe it was seven or eight years ago, when the town asked me to come in and produce a landscape enhancement plan for the entire town. And we did that. That included the median plantings, the signs, some other secondary sign plantings and things around town. They updated the, the posts and the aesthetics and really did a great job. And the town's got a lot of compliments on that, Mayor, they really have. And so this, this parcel was a part of that original proposal way back seven, eight years ago. And in that proposal, we had a, a, a new sign, a kiosk, a parking lot, and some plantings and fencing, I mean, you know, sort of the whole tilt. And I think VDOT and maybe some other partners didn't, didn't really think that was going to jive out there. And so it just kind of fell off the table. And we got all the other work done in town, but the east end of town, even though there's a sign right when you cross Cedar Creek, there Bonanza, it looks great. This really is the entrance, the east entrance into Lebanon. And so I think resurrecting this idea of doing something at this east entrance that brings it into some compliance of the enhancement plan we've already done. Begs some discussion. So what you have before you is, is I guess what I'll call a pretty simple, but I think effective plan to update the east entrance there into town. The green that you're seeing is very simply sod, it's lawn. And then the trees there will be the hawthorn trees. We do have one of the primary signs, entrance signs proposed there on the right-hand side of East Main as, as we come into town. And then there's about a 30-foot offset from each road. It's 20 feet out along the four lane. But the idea is to just bring in some pop soil and have some really nice sod in there. And all of those areas be bound by just a really clean concrete curb. And when you start moving little moves like that in a landscape that's really devoid of anything, it starts to make a big impact. And so these, these simple moves can start to update the entrance here. And then as we, you know, maybe this goes in, you know, there's other opportunities that come up that you all get ideas on or, or citizens make requests on and we can, we can hand it further. But in the talks with VDOT, with Jeff and Erica the other week, and, and following up with Jeff and Erica. He really had no major concerns with this design other than just preserving the drainage. We want to make sure that the drainage off of these roads stays pretty consistent with the way it is now. So that can be a problem with simple curb cuts and things like that. But as we go through this, I'll, I'll orient you there again. You can see the, the grass and the trees. And then as we, as we move to the first image. This would be coming facing east. They're turning, in the turn lane, turning in, across the four lane. You can see the lawn, the trees, the sign, and just how much of a, of an impact that simple move makes in a big landscape like that. The next image there then is coming west. This would be a little crossover of across from Dave Winter's entrance into his house. And that gives you sort of the, the long approach as to the rhythm of those trees and how they would feel down through there with that curving and that, and that lawn. The next image then is as you make the turn onto East Main Street from US 19. And again, the, the primary signs that we have on Pittston Road and West Main Street with some of the boxwood and hydrangea plantings along with the hawthorns there. And I think that really cleans up that entrance and makes it feel like it's proper and it's taken care of. The next, the last image then, and this was an important one coming off of, is the Four Farm Road, I believe. And we had a, a discussion about the site triangle and pull up to that stop sign. So this is taken from that stop sign. This is taken from the stop bar at that stop sign. And I don't think that anything that we do here is going to compete that site triangle. And Jeff and Erica both incurred with that as well. So that is the general gist of this one. The biggest thing that I think VDOT was concerned about was you, was losing the use of that lot.
Yeah.
As a lay down lot for slurry papers. I know they, they probably give them a pretty good deal to be able to stage there and park there. And so what this does is it, everybody has a cake and eats it too. It's, it's icing on the cake, I think. So they can still be used for VDOT functions, but the other times of the year, even when it's being used as that. It beautifies the entrance into town and does so, I think, quite simply, but effectively. And so I'll open it up to you all, any questions or comments you might have about this particular design.
Kevin, let's locate it out of town. How would, how do we go? I'm sure we'd have to have some kind of agreement, a joint agreement. How, what do we, what do we have to do? If we want to do a project?
Well, you'd have to get into who's, you know, who's going to maintain it. Who's going to, you know, carry insurance, I guess, on it, if there's going to be insurance on it. You know, you probably need to talk to your, your insurance carrier. But that, what they would cover is the town doesn't own anything out there. You know, what, those sorts of things you want to look into, you know, as far as, I'd say maintenance would be a pretty big deal.
And permission to do it.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely.
I think there's some questions on this one, Nathan, that we're going to have to get. I mean, me personally, that's my personal opinion, I think.
Sure.
Yeah.
We're going to have to cross, we got to get some questions answered.
Yes, sir.
From different people.
Yes, sir.
Before we move on to this one.
That's understood. Drew did, was VDOT receptive to this project? I mean, they were receptive to it?
Yep.
Did they mention, I mean, would it, Kevin, would it be, would it be an easement? Is that what it would be? I mean, is that what we would ask for if we both, both parties wanted to, wanted to pursue the project?
Yeah, I guess an ace, some sort of an easement or a non-exclusive lease or, or something like that. I mean, I guess the extent of what the town would be allowed to do, I think, you know, can be used for anything.
I'd like to have some kind of agreement since VDOT said yes, didn't they say no?
Yeah.
The key was, yeah, they need to be clear on it.
You know, and they just give you the bad, I just, they're term raising or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of different issues going into.
Unlikely to, they would say, you know, anything that the town does out there, VDOT reserves the right to remove it.
Absolutely.
Surely will, yeah.
And, but at the same time, you know, you're talking about, you know, grass and trees for the most part. It, it's not a huge investment that could potentially go away. The big, the biggest one would be the primary sign. And, you know, you just have to have those conversations at that time.
Well, we're talking to Jim from, I think, what's the name of that, of that grant program, Drew, for projects like this?
We have the TA grant, the Gateway Grant.
Gateway. And I've looked, we tried this, as you mentioned earlier, six, eight years ago.
Yes, sir.
And it's a joint grant, Kevin, is how we, how you submit through VDOT. I still think we have to get a clarification since it's not in town.
Yes, sir.
In the wrist.
Right town property.
It's our town property. So I think that's, you know, those are the things we'll have to cross.
Yes, sir.
We're certainly not going to be the only one putting money in the kids here.
Sure.
On that project.
Sure.
But it does look good.
It does, I mean, it, no doubt, it does.
Yeah.
I mean, it looks like a barren land.
Well, compared to, I think, what we initially had looked at with the, and partnered with the county mayor.
Yeah.
I think it's what Nathan says, it's kind of scaled back.
It is.
It might be the glue that fits, you know, for some of the, the feedback that we got during the downtown revitalization. Because, you know, we got feedback, how are we going to, you know, they'd like to see some improvements on the east end of town. And then what really knocked it home for me is on that first small business meeting that we had. That was one of the recommendations was to
To you.
To tighten up the east end entryway. So I, I mean, I'd like to move forward with, with going ahead and trying to get whatever agreement we can in place with VDOT. And of course, get all those questions answered with our insurance and everything.
I'm the county, we got the county approval.
I'm, I'd like to pursue it without the county.
It'll be kind of hard. We don't, we don't own it, they own it.
Does VDOT not own it? I don't think the county, I think, I think the county was involved in the joint venture because
Stay right away.
What's that?
Stay right away, right away.
Yeah, I think the county was initially involved, you know, with the original project, Mayor, because they were interested in the tourism and doing the I'd rather just do this as a, a VDOT town project, if possible. We know the county is going to put the money in it.
We don't know that, can we ask this?
Pretty lensy old ass.
I, yeah, I'd like to move forward with
Can the birds plan?
Well, I'd like to move forward with, with VDOT to see if we can
Okay.
Come to terms with VDOT. And I don't think there's too much that we need to plan before we get that in place, because it may be a waste of time, but.
Okay.
What do you think, Deanna?
You good?
He said he was.
He told him. All right, let him go along. Good work here, thank you.
Thank you for the town.
Yeah.
Buying the opportunity to work here. It's, it's really an honor to come back home and be able to do some things for your hometowns. Thank you for the opportunity.
See if I can keep this in the light of the dark.
Nathan, has VDOT seen this?
VDOT has seen both of these proposals.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And Jeff, you know, I just, I asked he and Erica just to give me sort of preliminary feedback, nothing official, you know. But on this east end, the only two comments he had was drainage. So ensuring that the drainage stays the same off the road. And again, by doing the curb, we have to do some curb cuts, but it'll still maintain that swell of the drop in, nothing will be changed. And then the other question he had was about the sign construction. And so on West Main and Pittston Road, we did not do a full breakaway design on that footer, meaning it's solid. If somebody hits it, it's staying. And what we did on those two roads, and you go by and see it, is we beefed up the curb. We ray poured the curb to a higher and longer stretch through there. And so as we discussed where the sign's going here, it's further off the road than it is on Pittston and West Main anyway.
Yeah.
And so the concern of somebody running into that is the last gear.
Okay.
I know that the only two comments that you have
Kind of a ditch there too, maybe?
There is.
Elevated a little bit?
Yeah, to be elevated slightly above the road.
Okay.
Going on that up slope, yeah.
So we could use the same, similar construction?
Absolutely. Yeah, seemed to be the indication.
Does it require the, they made us use like the sleeve, the, didn't the foundation have like a?
Yeah, structurally, so the, the footer on the foundation goes in and there's these sleeves that bolt onto that footer. And then the sign post slide down in that sleeve.
Will that be required again?
Yeah, it'll be the same.
Okay.
Same construction. Yes, sir. It's worked pretty good so far. Thank you.
Good, Mr. Short? Oh, and he has to have belts. What do you have to have that thing, Kevin just got?
Uh, I just got it, so I'm sure we can look at it in the gym, because they just now moved.
All right, Mr. Short.
Thank you. Um, pretty quick report today. Got some budget updates, finished up the draft budget, the protection stations that we can look at. It's got the water, wastewater, part of that balance and also state's rebalance as of now, obviously we can track and make any changes that you want to.
Balance budget, right?
Just water, wastewater, station, still got some work to do on the general. That will be, like I said, discussed at the finance meeting. So first things first, I guess we need to set a date for it. Thanks, Scott, Scott's got some other names.
Let's look at our cameras if you could.
We're about Tuesday the 20th.
What time is that?
Leonard, what time can you make it?
Uh, it'd probably be best if I could, five o'clock, I could make it or if I had to.
Five o'clock, Mayor.
Okay, got it. We got other date options, but that's 22nd.
No going 22nd. We're about later on the 20th.
How early could you on the 20th?
Are you off that day?
Yes, sir. It's the only day next week I'm off.
Brad, can you make a 4:00? That push you.
Uh, no, not that day. If, if it helps any. My daughter has a doctor's appointment that day.
What are you looking, if, and like I said, any dates I can make work. If it helps any, uh, but next week, the 27th, we have a small business board.
What date is that on?
Tuesday after Memorial Day.
I could do it Wednesday or Thursday possibly the next week on the 28th.
28th, works.
28th.
Okay.
Two doctors, that's me and the lot.
What was the other day?
29th. Brad, 29th, can you check?
Before we stay at 5? Before we stay?
About 5:00 there. Bye.
You have to remind us, Miss Dane.
I, 29th at 5.
Per, I'll have, so, I'll have some updated rates and examples of the bills and different tiers for water deals and that sort of thing to look at by the end. Per, I'll have, so, I'll have some updated rates and examples of the bills and different tiers for water deals and that sort of thing to look at by the end of the week. Next item are project updates, our lighting project were done, first phase one, ready to be hooked on as soon as AEP gets the power hooked in. I talked with Coy last week, he had on his side, he was waiting for county inspections. I spoke to Josh Jensen, he sent that inspection in last week. So as soon as AEP hits over there, hooks the lights up, they'll be on right away. Pickleball courts, fence has been installed and painted. Obviously those lights are in the phase two, are applied. Uh, the poles, the nets have been installed, so a couple finishing touches and books should be done this week. Basketball courts, same way, they painted it, fixed it, lighting on it will be in phase two. Uh, one question I don't think anybody has a problem with, but I'm going to double check just to make sure. Randy has all his equipment here and he is ready to move forward with phase two on the lighting project.
Is that the lights around the trails?
The pickleball lights, the basketball lights, and the lights around the trail. That's what I told him on the other file of council, I didn't think they'd have a problem with that, but he did need to know he wouldn't get paid until July of one. Uh, because of the whole purpose of breaking into.
See now that?
Yeah.
Is he good with that?
He's good with that.
And they're here to work, they got, they're here to work. Five, five A.
Brad.
Yeah, well, they got equipment here, that's.
That's what we kind of.
Yeah.
That's what we were planning on there.
Planning on it anyway, I think they just got those bases in some of those stuff in fashion what they thought they would get. So, uh, the next, next phase, they'll start, they'll start removing the wooden poles, simply get power over there here and lift up wooden poles, start doing the move and doing what's going up. Uh, the baseball M O U, Brad for the Little League, any changes you need to make to that or anything? That's the change to make to that. So if you get any of those.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't contact you before. Just so everybody's noticed the. Third paragraph down talks about.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
First, information.
Information, yes, sir.
I know there's small changes.
Okay.
Let's see, the part that starts from March first to July.
Okay.
Third sentence or so just says that the Little League will provide field supplies. And for like the last five years, the town's taken care of that. And it's very nice, it's one less thing to worry about. And also maybe define daily field maintenance more. We're happy to do it, but.
Take it out, Brad.
Yeah, just maybe.
I think it's more like marking the lines and that sort of thing, because you have the fourth now here.
Well, let's just take daily field maintenance out, because it's defined in there, the field markings. And. Go a second below that and take out minor field maintenance. And then maybe you can add.
Maybe.
That they will drag the field or something like that. And then also include something that's been very nice this year. Use the schedule, that Little League will handle all the scheduling for that field through that time. We've done that this year and it's been very successful.
Was that an ad?
Yes. Other than that, that's all I had unless anyone else said something. Thanks for doing that.
It's not a problem, changed it most of the time.
Be president next year?
If the head.
We have voted yet.
President.
Go ahead, buzz with you. We're going to president.
Get that signed before I'll get it. I'll make those changes, we're covered, you and the mayor's, get it signed. Last thing.
Hang on a second. Kim, now we need to approve this with the changes submission, that's another.
Or either get the changes and then approve it.
Can you wait till June, late? Just make the changes and put it back on your report. For June. You do that?
Yes, sir.
I'll have to borrow words from you, I know, I think that's important.
That's important.
Seven is the last thing, it's not the last thing. Moving on to the, um, one of the high school cheerleaders stopped by. Last week, they are building a locker room at the high school. And asked for any types of donations that we had. I know we didn't have any in the budget this year, but we have some remaining in kind of the kids who put back for extra athletic athletics. So I just gave them the back option, anybody want to talk about that?
Can you reduce their request to writing and I'll put it with the other donation requests?
For next year's budget?
For next year's budget. They say when they're going to get started on their project, Ruth?
I think, I guess it's footballs, I'm sure, I figured it starts late summer or early fall.
County screwboard, doing anything with that?
No clue, just stopped by here.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Ruth, anything for town manager?
I do have something, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got a couple things.
I've got some quotes here that I just actually received today. Of course, a new fence over behind the pool area, that runs up inside the pickleball court we talked about replacing it. So I was asked to get some quotes on it. Uh, we received three different quotes. Sport right at four hundred linear feet of eight foot tall black fence. McCall fencing is fourteen thousand, eight thirty-two. Dan Ashby, who's doing the pickleball court right now, eight, three hundred ninety linear feet, eight feet tall black model is twenty-four thousand, one oh two. And then Billy just sent me one that he got this evening from Horton Fencing, which is four hundred linear feet of eight feet tall chain link fence at nineteen thousand, seven fifty-one. And all three of those are commercial grade fence. McCall fencing was the only one that gave me a residential price. And that was eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. And all of these bids are air guys doing the demo of the old fence and removal of the old fence.
So too much vegetation in it and too old, too old to paint and Billy wasn't siding it either.
Yeah, there's some new fence, you've got pretty.
Did Dan Ashby have many square foot, was it?
Four hundred, or three ninety, sorry, linear feet.
Now, the McCall gentleman, did he, did he do the, that outfit that did the pool fence?
The gentleman worked for, he's moving along with another company now, but he, he worked for McCall and now I think it's strictly residential.
All three builds the same dimensions?
Yes.
With black fence?
Black fence.
Same height?
Eight feet, yes, sir.
And with privacy slats or some type of privacy?
These don't include any privacy slats. Uh, McCall has a available upgrade windscreen for one thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine, or privacy slats for five thousand, two hundred and thirty-two, which I believe.
They still be the cheapest, wouldn't they?
They would be, I think we could do it cheaper also, that's why.
Is the, when you say that fence, I'm trying to get it by mind, are we talking about the west end of the pickleball courts?
So it takes, so the fence that separates the pickleball courts from the residence, the houses there.
That's one of them.
Runs down.
It's all the way down to the pool.
So we could cut, we could, we could make it private. To, from the court to the residential.
Correct.
Okay.
Would that be put sled, sleds in?
Right, yeah, and I think we would buy those and put them in.
So.
Yeah, yeah, we've done that over at the basketball court, I think we could do it cheaper than five thousand dollars.
Did Dan Ashby get to include that?
No.
I don't know. They were just the cheapest.
He was waiting, Shane called today and he was, uh, needing our AEP in for today, just waiting to hear back from this main factory, so I'm like, they have price increase? Or what, but yeah, furniture installed, three hundred ninety linear foot, eight feet tall, black commercial chain link fence, removal of existing bits and brush by others.
The first one you mentioned, the fourteen thousand, was who?
McCall commercial fencing.
Do we deal with that before?
Don't think we've had work done by them before, but we had quotes on, on for us, on some projects that have.
Things would be a pretty significant difference between all three of them, isn't it?
Got fourteen thousand, nineteen thousand, twenty-four thousand. Ballpark.
I'd like to move forward with the McCall commercial.
And a motion, Mr. Gentleman?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
We know, I think we need to get it done within a reasonable amount of time.
Approximately two or three weeks, execute the front contract there.
Okay, that's good.
And we have talked to the, all three residents and they just need a couple of days, one's got it all, a couple of days to, to get up and make plans for it, but they usually have a barrier fence.
I really like the look of the, the pool fence, like the privacy.
Yes.
I mean, it just looks clean. So I don't know if we can manage that, but I think so.
Drew, can we work together and get some prices on, like UTVs or a good soft car?
Can we play a second, we need to vote on this motion. I'd rather to. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those same side. Okay, now.
Drew, can we talk together about finding quotes for a UTV or a dump park? And then in the future, I'd like to maybe build a, build on to our shed, we've talked about that before. Where a pump house is there, add on to that, that way we have some service or new parkwood. Because currently we have none.
And hopefully we have enough room. We talked about putting the, the pool lanes down there, you know, kind of getting them off the pool, being able to get them off the pool deck at least. When we needed to, at times.
I think we have plenty of room there to go.
Like a gate there and kind of concrete ramp, definitely over there, roll them over there.
That's on the old front.
Yeah, I think so.
Also, Ruth, is there any way you can get some pricing for the finance committee meeting? All those lane separators?
Line dividers.
Lane dividers. I don't know what the cost is if you.
I don't even know if they're red anymore.
No, they're pretty rough, can I just leave it at that?
They're about nine hundred dollars a piece. Fully flying.
There's different companies in our color if you give them the real life.
We'll check it out, I think Shane has looked at this.
I'll get it.
Else just I'll see what we can.
He may have a quote, I'll bring it up. If you can bring him to the finance committee meeting for the most. Anything else, Mr. Short?
Yes, sir.
You're going to have to add these things to your list.
Well, I just come up, I just got them today. We are planning on paving June sixteenth, um, Main Street area. They could actually start earlier, we're even putting them off to May sixteenth, so we're paving the area where Seaguard Fest is at. Uh, so we don't hang mess down there for that. Which that includes, that area is going to include four of the crosswalks, two which are in bad shape, will need to be fixed. Uh, so I got some pricing on that. As they build those up and pave those, they come in and stamp them while with hot asphalt. Only company I could get was, uh, inland construction, which we got that from DZAC. Uh, they've done work with DZAC before, uh, you're looking at ten thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars per crosswalk. For that, and I assumed we wanted to go back to what, what we had already. And now it's the perfect time, we're going to build those up and pave them anyways. Uh, I think it's the time to do it, so.
How far are we paving, where are we starting?
The, what we're going to try to do is, we actually have a little bit more left in state street money than what we thought. First price to pay them. What we're going to try to do is the, the crosswalk at the old middle park, we're going to write to it and stop there, that way. You've got, you've got tie-in on each side, we'll start wherever we left on, on Main Street last year.
Okay.
So we get past the courthouse.
There, go east a little bit.
Tie in, tie in to the crosswalk at the old middle. Uh, because I'm not one percent sure if they need to do any kind of road cuts or anything when they're doing these pedestrian signs. Uh, we'll give them a cut on the opposite side and start there and go on next spring.
Will they be finished by June thirty, you think, Will or?
Yeah.
Or will they have to be done in order for us to make the, or VDOT?
To get it on that side, as long as they invoice us back, talk to Jeff, we can.
On VDOTs?
Yep.
Allotments.
So we'll have the inland construction crew in here, uh, DZAC and, uh, Clyde, I mean, strike, firm my eye after that.
Pretty good.
I'm guessing, since that's a separate, then DZAC will probably be an approval on that inland construction. Crosswalk.
Through a motion?
Just plan on doing one side, one crosswalk.
What is that, it's on?
Crosswalk, one or two.
There'll be four total crosswalks.
Four total?
Correct, yeah. Full length of the road, everything mills up, comes down, it's just, it's brand new pavement, they may come out those stamps and sand it after that. So it'd be the post office crosswalk, the church crosswalk, uh, the red lights and the courthouse.
And they're going to be part of the paving projects, so we, we decide, yay or nay?
Correct. Ten thousand, five hundred, come in on the food. Yes, so it becomes a total of four thousand, or forty-two thousand eighty-nine for the four crosswalks. Try to catch that fifth one next year.
Let's, just to make sure, be honest, where's the worst?
Uh, I think either courthouse or the back.
That's true.
The worst, I guess. Plus they cut the line across through there for the gas line and.
You happy with the results of the gas line repair to the Main Street?
We'll be paving over it.
Really? And let me ask you another, in the future, when they come through Main Street doing road cuts?
Needs to be inspected?
Yeah, well, I just didn't think it was very well done, except. So whoever, uh, I guess, who would do that, have all that, Billy? Who, is that to inspect your side of town?
Yeah.
But you're going to fix those for me, because you know, you're going to pay the money?
I'm going to pay over those and also fixes all of the kind of cuts to the lighting.
Great, okay.
And that is all for myself.
Sure.
If I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Did we approve that?
Not yet.
Not yet, need a motion?
They did make a motion on it. I'll make the motion to approve it.
For a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion?
Do we know, do you have a final schedule, I mean, are we doing anything besides Main Street?
In the fall, yeah, this will bring us to our, the end of our state street money, you, for, to all of them, in the fall, we've got a couple of different ones. See what happens on Cleveland Road and apply again for that state of good repair, see what happens there. Then, um, got some areas, different ones, we've been checking on, more size street areas.
What about behind the courts?
We're fixing that when they come in.
Oh, I had a question, I don't really.
Good question.
Did we get reimb, did we get reimbursed for behind the courthouse?
As soon as they prepare that, we got, but they'll send that bill to county itself.
He goes to lines up.
Okay, so we didn't pay for that?
We had to wait for anything yet.
Okay.
And we would pay just to fix that mess where that mix with bad things over there.
Spots on.
No, we didn't.
That was a potential problem.
I mean, yes.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those, okay. Anybody else, Scott?
Yes, sir. I noticed in the supervising meeting that you discussed trash service for the county event. I think two of the event, I mean, this question, I guess, is for the council, do we want to use volunteers and our part timers to do the trash service? Or do we want to contract that out? Because I know we got some feedback from some of the events that they'd rather us handle it.
Well, we agree, we've already agreed to secure the big read.
Right, we placed a cost on the, the, the town, which is Seaguard Fest, April of July.
So we want to take volunteers and?
Yeah, I, I like taking care of our own, that's my preference, so.
Yeah, I'm all for taking care of them, I just.
We didn't want to go to the.
Well, I mean.
So we'll take volunteers first and then maybe we need to get some supplement help if any.
Yeah, see what the.
We got seven parks, six or seven parks. We got seven part, six or seven part timers that we want to plan on hiring for modeling.
Yeah, yes, sir.
And I guess it's a good time to talk about that. I'm good, I saw Billy's recommendation, he liked to hire six or seven. And I know that's, that's under your preview, I'm good with hiring six or seven part-time workers for the street crew. I'd just say send them home as a drain, that's all it asks. And if we've got a crew, I really appreciate that they are willing to know after hours and on weekends, I'm good with that as well, so.
And make sure they look good.
What's that?
Make sure they're wearing the proper work attire. Don't want to run over.
When can they start, Drew, do we know?
I think a couple of them might start next week. The ones over in college, I've got two of them that are Southwest, they're out.
So we're getting some back from last year's then?
Yep.
That's good.
And I've got a couple of names I'd like to request to consider. Can I ask my several people to submit your bids? If we look later, do whatever.
Did the, is Ray's hardwood floor able to, were you able to get them scheduled to?
Shane worked on, yeah, Shane's working on them. He sent me a price too and I got back there, emo, it wasn't bad at all.
Yeah, it's under your name, okay.
That was about the lines.
Yeah, without pickleball court lines. Did Gay Street Lane Group, did they ever get us that study that we needed?
They are, they're, they're submitted to the health department, so we're going to go hydro office.
And the last thing I got, Mayor, is I've had three requests from residents of the manor to see if the town would replace the sign at the entrance to the manor. I wanted to open that up for discussion. Somebody says it's not there at all now, I didn't notice.
It's not.
And I think we.
Well, that was good. They fixed the wall.
It probably just deteriorates.
The hurricane took it out on twice a week.
Oh, Helena, Helena took care of it?
And I know we, when we did, when we did the west end landscape enhancements, we did, we did the sign and we did the planning. So I didn't know if that, if that was something we were going to continue to provide the sign or.
We knew we did.
Just talk to, who's our guy that led us our signage?
Hunter.
Yeah. Because he's the same, it's the same type of material and design like we have for town.
I think they always have to do it before the individuals did their brand.
We did it one time.
You'd like to see a mark of gray out?
I'd almost like to see Nathan would drop some off. See what it looks like. I'd like to kind of do it this time and it'd be the last time. For a long time, I think I've been there since seventeen and haven't probably, haven't been there three or four years.
Is there any way to permanently put, I mean, instead of this, didn't have a swing bra?
I think all of them always do.
I'd like to see what Nathan, maybe.
We could probably do it as that, but we'd still.
Sure.
Yeah.
Add to, yeah, for that to work, it'll be cheap.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else, Ruth? Thank you, Drew.
Uh, just a reminder, there are one, it's coming up weekend, May seventeenth, town iD R sells.
The Saturday?
Yep, just right along. And then we will leak once before, but it's the week right before Seagull Fest coming up on June fourteenth, thirteenth and fourteenth. Shane's been hard at work on that, just kind of being a go-to on that this year, so.
Shane, you still have anything? We want to talk about Seagull Fest. We wanted to mention something about food or something.
Well, he asked me to do the piece for all the entertainment, because I'm doing all the things for the spirit already anyway. All the live shows. And so I gave him a quote and that would be for the whole weekend for all entertainers and for the town council, so kind of I did.
Okay, I can keep.
Can we just talk? Just make that with Drew, I think.
We're good.
Can you let us know this report, talk weekly before.
Anything else? Thank you.
Chief? You're up, buddy. You're in the bag, it's box stand.
All right, I don't have a whole lot for you, so just want to give you some other numbers for April. We worded it right now. There's a little bit of busy month, which always kind of starts to pick up in the end anyway. But for the month of April, we have totaled one hundred and thirty-nine total summonings, warnings and cases come in. Twenty-seven summonings, forty-nine morning written warnings, we had sixty-three total criminal cases come in. Forty-one total arrests, thirty-two missing mirrors and nine felonies. Responded to thirteen total motor vehicle crashes, one DUI arrest, had thirty-two assist motorists caused. And for the month of April, we reached by the seven hundred and forty officer service. Total thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-six miles. We did implement the program that we had talked about last time about having each officer visiting two businesses a shift. And what we're doing now, Mayor and I discussed, we're actually having them document that. And it's not on this report because we had figured out a way to get it to populate over. But on your, starting next month, I report you'll be able to see a number of business walk-ins.
By officer?
Well, I can try to break down the officer, I was just going to do the total of the month, but I can try to break it down to officer if you want.
Just want to make sure.
Okay, yes, yeah. Some of the community police we mentioned, we did have a little parade, we assisted with feeding your Southwest Virginia proper office, started to got back heavy in our business checks. Still walking through the schools and the ballgames and assisting kind of the youth escorts and stuff. If you look over at our DTF report, we have listed, we found we had six successful purchases. Also did have the DTF officer to come out and assist officers on some drug defibrillation a couple of times. So he definitely hit the ground running and, and thank you, he is, he's talked pretty good on that. Everything else is, is pretty much business as normal, going pretty good. Did finally Friday receive the last piece of, piece of equipment that we needed for the two Durangos. So tomorrow I'll give a date on when everything will be installed on those, so they should be on full active control in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Have you seen or increased pedestrian traffic in town?
Yes, we have, and I anticipate it to get worse.
I think it will too.
You know, we do have an additional facility that's now moved to about seventy-five people, you know, and they're encouraged to leave or not the town.
Get over the parking places for a few times a day.
Exactly, yeah. The exact.
Are you talking about homes?
No, I'm talking about those super cars.
Oh, I'm talking, I'm talking about that. I see. I saw a family the other day, a mansion, sure, you know, though. West end, east end and back.
I think they own the business out there just next to Raymond Walk.
A way on that, okay.
I was saying several fairbys through here, you see them every day, kind of there.
Yeah. Yeah, and you know, it's, I say, it's unfortunate because it's hard to, it's hard to kind of, to make feelings on who's just walking and who's.
It's tough.
Pick stuff up, but we'll definitely keep an eye on them, just let them know that our presence is there.
Anything else for Chief? Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it, thanks.
Tell me I've got something I'd like to read if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
My dad, James, that's a pig that passed away last week. He was a member of the living in town council for twenty-eight years, a businessman for forty-nine. The outpouring of love and support from the community was overwhelming. We as a family greatly appreciate it. I would like to thank Mayor Ovi, council members Ms. Jackson, Ms. Fields, Mr. Scott Gilmore. I would also like to thank Mr. Kevin Killar, our town attorney. Also, the Livingston Police Department, Chief Eric Deskins, Livingston Fire Department Chief John Michael McCoy, Drew Short, Diane Nunley, Beverly Stinson and all employees to town level. We appreciate all the kind words, the food, the prayers that were given during this difficult time. On behalf of myself, my mother, Big Blue Keg, my siblings, Winnie the Keg with Snee, and David Keg with my heartfelt thank you.
You, you were laying in our thoughts, sir. Mr. Stiller, do you have anything?
I don't, Mr. Mayor.
We're going to table that item till June that you need, that, what's it called?
Yeah, it's a, it's a five action lawsuit, I guess, that you.
Yeah, it's a legal law.
Sit down on a legal side and have it be to.
Okay. Any other business?
Did you want me to address the real estate?
Real estate, yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Me and Diane is currently in the process of getting or trying to obtain the increased percent of the assessed values for the town eleven. I don't know if that's a number that we're going to be able to get. I know they should be able to get us what the increase on the assessed value is for the overall county. I think Diane said that they should be able to get us what information we asked for by Thursday. I know it's my intention and I've talked to, there's at least multiple council members that want to propose a, a tax rate cut.
Adjustment?
That would offset the real estate tax to where there wouldn't be any increased burden to the town taxpayer. So hopefully I'll have that information by our budget finance meeting and the council will be able to discuss and set the, the real estate.
Good deal.
Something else I'd like, I'd like that John Michael Stankford to the small business council.
Is that Conley, Moons Blue?
Yeah.
Is there a second? I'll say a second. Ruth Stamper to the small business, all favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose. See, Miss Diane, can you, would you care to notify him, please?
I will.
Tell him, I guess the next meeting will be Tuesday after Memorial Day.
The twenty-seventh, yeah.
Any need for executive session for anyone tonight?
Yes, sir.
For what purpose?
Personnel.
You need a motion to go into executive session?
Legal also.
Legal?
I'll make the motion to go into executive closed session under section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A for one personnel and seven legal, Mayor.
Your second?
I'll second.
All favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Okay.